We call our meeting to an end at this time. I'm going to ask that we please stand for our invitation to pledge allegiance. To the Creator of the heavens and the earth, we thank you for another day. We thank you for another opportunity to serve. We ask you to please be with us. We know that there's nothing that we've done that has called upon you to give us this honor of another day of what we call life. So we thank you for your presence. We ask that your presence guide us in all the decisions that we make because you're all seeing, you're all knowing, and we only know in part. So we thank you for your presence this day, and we ask for you to please have your way. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one president, under our oath, in the business of liberty, justice, and strong law. Counsel, I'm going to call your attention to your agenda as we move forward. I'm going to ask, first of all, we have approval of our minutes from July the 8th, 2024, regular meeting. Do we have a motion? We have a motion in the second and a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye and opposed like sign. Also, counsel, you also have before you an addenda to the agenda, and it's entitled executive session and action from the executive session from the special call meeting held at 11 o'clock AM on August 12, 2024, to receive legal advice regarding the PFAS suit 30 dash 4 dash 70A2. Do we have a motion? We have a motion in the second and discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. This item will be added to our executive session listing at the end of our meeting. At this time, we will move forward with honors and recognition. First, we have service recognition. We will call for the chief from the fire department to start us with our recognitions following the fire department. Then we'll have chief from our police department, and then we'll have recognition from our direct from our engineering department. Please proceed as outlined.
Today you recognize Kevin Holt. Kevin started with the city fire department in August 1999, and he was assigned to ship three, which was actually shipped out of them. So we got to work together initially when he first came here. Kevin was promoted to firefighter driver in October 18, 2004. And not only was Kevin promoted to driver, he also brought a skill set that was really needed by others, that was a skill set of being a mechanic. Because being a mechanic can encourage you to do a lot of things. So we had a position that would allow him to be a mechanic as well. Back then, we had a mechanic per ship, and he was one of those guys. He helped us out a lot, saved the city a lot of money doing a lot of work. We appreciate that. Ten years later, on December 13th, he was promoted to captain. But his skills still needed, although he was captain, he still was a mechanic as well on the ship. But of course, those duties required a lot more stuff than being captains, because he was responsible for the station, the engine, and personnel that was assigned after all their training and all those things. Now, we reckon that in the 25 years, but also just last Thursday, was it? Thursday, Kevin retired. Hey, you got 25 years. Hey, you got 25 years. Now you're ready to go to jail. So we were so glad that he's meeting this point in his life to do that. 25 years of service is a good long time, and being able to do that with the help that he still has and all that, so a good thing. I'm very proud for him. You know, he was a firefighter before he came here as a volunteer, and he's going to continue on being a firefighter at volunteer service after he leaves here. So just congratulations on everything.
I loved it. Unfortunately, I did decide to retire a little bit sooner than I wanted to. My family's preparing to get a little older. That's just the things I need to worry about. Having my focus there more than, more than, I didn't want to have to say more than here, but on a 24-hour shift from here, you've got to separate your mind and body from everything else that's going on. So to me, to keep my full focus and to keep my crew safe, I would better try to pass off everything, forget everything about what's going on at home with parents or anything else, and that's kind of took it. So I made the choice to go ahead and retire, get some more time with mom and daddy, help them out with everything, and they live in the fire department.
I understand you always say that when it comes to families first, and so there's nothing like parents, and we do not have another set of parents. So congratulations to you for having your parents and folks all putting you first because they love and care for you too, that both of them are returning to Florence. I'm glad, as you see, we believe you could be a part of this family, but also the service that you provide, taken all the work. Now, you're happy for me, just enjoy yourself, you're glad for the service, you're glad for each joy that makes this life. See, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, here's to recognize Lieutenant Chris Christopher Allen Walters. 25 years of service, nice fellow man, but... Lieutenant Chris Walters began his employment with the city of Florence in August of 1999. He attended the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy in November of 99. He was a graduate of class number 390 in February of 2000. Had to complain field training.
Sure. Eight hours together.
Oh, really? After complaining field training, Chris was assigned to the uniform patrol duties for several years, where he worked his way to achieving the rank of corporal. After certainly several more years as a patrol force corporal, Chris transferred to the traffic unit, which he attempted and successfully completed, all thanks to the many motor vehicle collision reconstruction forces offered by the federal justice academy. While working in the traffic unit, she excelled in many facets of the motor vehicle collision investigation as well as reinforcement of traffic. Chris was then promoted to the rank of sergeant and transferred back to uniform patrol, where he served as a first-line supervisor. On July 29th of 2023, Chris was promoted to his current rank of lieutenant. Currently, he oversees the daily operations of his four departments. In this role, Chris has been effective in supervising many junior officers and collaborating with senior officers as well as other departments and employees of the city. Allen, to ensure that citizens he serves are receiving the highest level of all of the services. Lieutenant Chris Walters is also an accomplished painter and sketch artist.
Thank you.
We worked out together, break the leg of the lines today. He's talking about leaving us, maybe in September, but I keep throwing the bucky my way. Very kind. So we just want to take this opportunity to thank you for the decade of 25 years of service.
When we were pulled up on retirement speech, said you're not quite sure you're in the chief's mat.
How good. I had no idea that I got to do it. First of all, my journey has been interesting. As a cop, we did a lot of back and it comes from God first. In the early part of my career, I didn't have that. In my journey of faith, I found that. And so I need to thank God first for always having his hand on me, even when I didn't recognize it. Thank you so many direct years. We've received in there every shift, every take. That's small act, Jennifer. And the two little ones, well, they'll always be little ones in my mind. They put up with it too, my children, Elliot and Connor. Thank you to Chief Hyder. He's a super leader. He really is, I'm not saying he's sitting here. Captain Ford over there, he's been a buddy, he's been a mentor, he's been wonderful. He's one of the best cops this city has. So I'm looking forward to seeing what happens next. 25 years, I went like that. And sometimes I look back, it's easy, easy, another 25. If you listen to him the whole time I've been on the street, one capacity to the other, this belt has a number on your back, so I think it's not a body sentence. But thank you, President.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, I'm pleased to announce that we're celebrating 10 years of service for James Clint Moore. This Moore started August 11, 2014, with the city. He changed from the private sector. He's been with us again 10 years. He's risen through the ranks, promoting three or four times during that time. He's now our assistant city manager. Clint has his fingerprints throughout the city of Florence, whose unique skill set has assisted us in saving tons of money using him. He's a landscape architect, so we use him in that capacity, housing programs, designing subdivisions, working with our planning department. He's worked there, he's currently engineering a special project downtown. It's a passion, all of the major projects in downtown. Our farmers market, he worked with us on that. So he's worked throughout the departments, all the departments, all of our department directors abuse Clint's services in the past. The public certainly knows him through stormwater, all of our housing developments. All that runs through Clint's office. Very small department, but they get tons of work done. Clint is invited to the city of Florence. We certainly hate being here today, but we did have him up here, and we want to say congratulations on 10 years.
And I know before Clint leaves, he came in 2011, I come in 2010. So I'm still telling you now, when you look at all the community development, especially in our Catholic areas, and the displaced, the old park station, and also Pine Street, he served Pine Street. You look at a major part of what he's played in this. Now, I'll say to his successor that our predecessor, Senator Drew, reckoned he came home when those Drews had a heavy handprint on Clint. Because Drew, when I first became a constable, a part of constable, he brought forth a plan that he had written, that he wanted to see things done over 29 years for the city. So the vision you see right now, happening in Florence, is having to go with time, building on the foundation of the past. And so I'm glad to tell you that, now you got to thank us there. I knew you got, you got 25 years. So you will see this vision, how development should take place with design. You leave out. Thank you. This officer, George, this officer, you ready? Please, would you bring him forward? I know he came to celebrate, so please bring him forward. I want y'all to meet one of the teenagers. Please bring him forward, if you don't mind, and take your time and introduce him. I want y'all to see some of the things that's happening with the city and county working together.
Hey, everybody. My name's Ronnie Prosser. I'm the best getter with the sheriff's officer in Florence. Also have the pleasure of being a K-9 handler for K-9 bomber here, being trained in explosive stations. We serve obviously the city and county, and we actually serve bigger agencies. We travel the coastal, give her stadiums, assist in other agencies, making sure that there's no explosive threat, even that, however you may dare. He investigates about three years, maybe five if he's over. And you can tell he's shaking, he thinks we're here to work. He sees new places, new people. To him, it's a game. He just wants to work, he can get a story, so. You got same mind as us, that's what he do.
Thank you. I do want to come to celebrate offices, I want to make sure we got any people.
That concludes our honors and recognition. Next, we will move forward with our appearances before council. We'll give the, already time here, a few minutes. So at this time, we will move forward with appearances before council, and each person who will give notice to speak may be limited to five minutes presentation at the discretion of the presiding officer. The seat of Florence ordinance section 2 dash 24H. So I will ask that each presentation or presenter, please limit your presentations to five minutes. So next, we have first, Mr. Charlie Bear, new from the Field Service Management for the Municipal Association of South Carolina to present the 2024 Municipal Association Achievement Award.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it is great to be in Florence. Let's keep the celebration going. It's great to celebrate with you. Back in July, at the Municipal Association's annual meeting, Mayor, on behalf of the city of Florence, you accepted an achievement award for your sports tourism project. And so we're here today to celebrate that for the team locally. All of council, as a former city manager, I know how much these celebrations just are so important. Got a short video that we're going to show, and then afterwards, if we could take a photo together. I would tell you, 271 cities in our state, 40 applied for this award, and Florence is the winner this year. Your name is on here five times. That speaks heavily for the city and your leadership, so for that.
Cultivating excellent recreational opportunities has long been a goal for the city of Florence's comprehensive plan, and this focus has come to include economic development category, the Joseph P. Riley Jr. Award, the city of Florence. Cultivating excellent recreational opportunities has long been a goal for the city of Florence's comprehensive plan, and this focus has come to include sports tourism as well, allowing the community to invest in itself as a vibrant economic hub.
We certainly didn't get here overnight. We started over 30 years ago in the sports tourism industry. We started small, and we gradually scaled up. As the interest was there, we had to get buy-in from business and industry and show that it was a win-win for us all.
Florence's expanding slate of sports facilities drawing people from across the region and even the nation now includes the 30-court Dr. Eddie Floyd Tennis Center, the 14-field Florence Soccer Complex, and the multi-purpose Freedom Florence Recreation Complex. The newest facility, the Florence Sports Complex, is home to Carolina Bank Field, where the Coastal Plain League baseball team, the Florence Flamingos play, as well as five little league fields, a high school baseball field, and a collegiate-level track. The city used installment and hospitality revenue bonds to fund the approximately $35.6 million in construction cost of its newest facilities. Land donations came from the doctors Bruce and Lee Foundation and the philanthropist Dr. Edward Floyd.
I think about how it affects the quality of life for our citizens. I believe that when you have a healthy economic, you know, community is very important because therefore we have citizens here who enjoy living here, working here, and playing here. So it affects our quality of life as well as economic development.
The facilities spread among the city's neighborhoods and commercial districts have easy interstate highway access and trail system connections.
You know, these facilities had multipurpose when they were built. They were for citizens for our recreation programs, to provide quality of life, and at the same time, the economic impact that industry, sports tourism has. It is definitely a hard balancing act. I work very closely in the position I am, working with our league boards, working with our local leagues, and bringing in sports tourism events. So I have the calendar in front of me at all times, and we're always making sure that our local citizens are taken care of, that, you know, our leagues, our baseball leagues and basketball leagues and softball leagues and soccer are able to get their games in, and we can provide that for our youth in the community. And at the same time, as we book tournaments, knowing how we can move those around the calendar and the best dates, and working very closely with them.
In 2022, Florence saw a $12.2 million economic impact of sports tourism compared to $8.2 million in 2018. More recently, the 2023 Florence Cup alone brought more than 11,000 unique visitors to the Florence Soccer Complex. Hospitality revenues generated by sports tourism exceeded the projected $5.8 million in the 2023 fiscal year. Planning for future expansions at every step, the city now aims to solidify its status as a premier sports destination with a four-field multi-purpose complex and an expansion of the three-court Pearlmore Basketball Center with an arena-style facility.
Again, so on behalf of the association board and our team, congratulations to Team Florence for winning the Joe Riley Achievement Award in Economic Development.
And I'm going to ask that the staff, please come forward and line up below for a photo, and I'm going to ask the council, will y'all come in closer and stand together for a photo? Would y'all please come stand up towards the seat?
Congratulations, all of you.
And we're going to proceed with our appearances before council, but if there's no objections, when we complete our appearances before council, I'm going to ask that we move our resolution up so that those who are present to receive resolutions can receive those before we enter into the business of this council. Is there any objections? Hearing none? The agenda has been modified. So next, we have appearing before council, Mr. Don Strickland, the executive director for PDRTA, to provide an update on PDRTA. Mr. Strickland, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, administration, and general public, Florence citizens. I'm going to start off also with a quick video, and then we'll try to beat this timer after that.
I need a war. I rode PDRTA for 18 years. I've seen it grow from five buses to a whole lot of buses. Their drivers. They are courteous, funny. They're more like family than they are drivers. I would ride the Francis Marion bus to get to town. They got me where I needed to go. You can go anywhere on the bus. I couldn't have done living in town without it. It got me to doctors and grocery stores and shopping and seeing friends. The routes grew with me. And as soon as I realized it was a bus right down the street from me, I said, I can do this all on my own. And I have. I'm thankful for the years that it was right there, right down the street from me, that I could ride it and do things for myself. The best part of working at PDRTA is knowing that we're providing a service to so many people to allow them to get to work, pay their bills, and do their daily tasks that they may have no other way to get it done if it wasn't for PDRTA. I've been behind the wheel with bus for over 10 years. It makes my heart glad when I can go down to the transfer center and see the different people getting on the buses, doing their daily routines. I think PDRTA is a great asset to so many people. What motivates me the most? Everybody's situation is different, but my situation was a big motivator to me. From where I came from to where I am now, I'm grateful to be a part of PDRTA.
I'm going to cut this one off. Stop the clock. Let's check.
So we can give you grace of the time here where you had to start the video and everything.
All right. Thank y'all so much. So that's part of our kind of why I ride, why I drive, and then also why I partner campaign, we're working on PDRTA. So there's going to be more of that throughout social media and other places, but it really does tell a story. You can multiply that times, you know, a few thousand, and that's kind of what we see day in and day out, is just folks that, you know, truly need what we're kind of putting out there, gets them, gives them access, gives them, you know, the flexibility to be able to do things they don't have to rely on other people to do, and that's really what it's all about. So I am going to run through this pretty quickly, but this is our 50th year at PDRTA. I've been there for 16 of those 50, and it really has been great. And it hadn't always been great, lots of ups and downs, but really just doing really wonderful things over the past five or six years with the growth, and that's kind of what I want to come share a little bit about today. So it all started 1974. First RTA in South Carolina was established, obviously over 3,500 square miles, the largest in South Carolina. We were actually the largest in the country for a while, but the third largest currently with the amount of square miles, not the amount of service we're providing, but the location itself. I'm going to run through some of these and not cover all of them, but, you know, in the spirit of Olympics, we did transport a lot of folks in 1996 to Atlanta from this area, this region alone, from the coast and Florence region. So just, you know, been involved with doing a lot of different things. 2017, the current Florence Transit System, center open downtown Florence over Darlington and Irving Street, and it's been going well. We were pretty much about maxed out what we can do there, but obviously appreciate the city and the partnership we were able to make that happen several years ago. Little downtown shuttle we operate now is doing about 3,000 trips a month, just in downtown area. A lot of that's related to medical appointments, but really good service there. A lot of service in the rural areas. We've had a lot of growth in recent years with just new services. I won't run through all of it, but just a few years ago, we were only running service in two counties. Now we're running service in all six counties that were commissioned to serve and growing even more. Couple of things that really kind of point to the Florence side is recently, we started the Timminsville Express Route, which connects to Florence. A lot of folks in Timminsville needed access to get to Florence, and now they have that three days a week. We're hopeful to be able to do that five days a week pretty soon. We did host the inaugural South Carolina Rural Transit Day. We had another one this past year, and that's been going well. Couple of other things, the biggest thing on this list is obviously new service in Chesterfield County, but also we started the Black River to Florence Route through partnership with MUSC. That connects folks in Lake City, Scranton, Coward, Effingham to Florence, and obviously that's a big part of that route, or those individuals, those citizens coming this way, and what they're doing, they're spending resources this way. So we're happy to be able to provide that to get them to their, not just medical, but shopping, anything else they need to do, and a lot of that is workforce as well. This past year, our senator, Mike Rickenbach, and Patricia Henning, representative from Marlborough County area, received the task, that's the Transportation Association of South Carolina. I have the honor of serving as president of that group right now. Sometimes it's an honor, sometimes it's more than I want it to be, but it is going really great. So we were honored to be able to do that with them, and then we also had them involved at our 50th anniversary at SIMT a couple of months ago. Y'all met this lady a little earlier. So a few things I just wanted to touch on. For the past five or six years, I've kind of made a case for we got to extend services. We currently end at 6:00 PM on the Florence Transit System. Now, we are running workforce routes. About 55% of our ridership now are individuals going to and from work every day. And so this is certainly a piece of that puzzle. You can see some of the other RTAs across the state and what they're doing, but most of them, they're at least getting that second shift, folks home from work. They're able to go to dinner, they're able to go, you know, to somewhere, nice restaurant, sit down and eat, still using services to get back home. So and in the future, I do hope we can work to, you know, work together to be able to try to figure out how to navigate beyond that, so we can extend those services past 6:00 PM. A lot of foot traffic, folks getting off work at seven, eight, nine o'clock, and either having to try to find a ride home, or walking home, or biking home. So we definitely want to be able to provide them with the resources they need and ask for another day, another conversation. We're currently working with Flats Florence County, certainly thank them for being able to help us initiate a full-blown transit study for this region, and so that's going really well. We're into a lot of the conversations, a lot of the data entry data work, but I won't list all this, but you can see that we've got quite a few different items on this list that we're trying to cover within this transit study, and I'm really excited about potentially next spring being able to bring that, you know, before you all, to kind of share what the results are, and I think it's going to be really eye-opening with economic impact and kind of where we're headed. Won't touch on all this, but we do a lot of healthcare, a lot of workforce. I mentioned 55% of everyone that steps on the buses an hour going to and from work, and then the education piece is key. We're working with Francis Marion, Florence Johnson Tech. We're doing the teen shuttle for our high schools, middle schools here in Florence, the Barnes Street. We have paid internship programs in place, and we're looking to deploy those things throughout our region, not just in those areas where they currently are, but a lot of really good things going on in our world right now. This is a part of a...
And Mr. Strickland, I'm going to ask you to close up in the next two minutes.
We'll do it. Thank you, ma'am. So this last slide, this slide is important, maybe not quite the last one, but passenger miles, actually, this is revenue miles. Our passenger miles exceed 10 million right now in our service area, but revenue miles are close to 1.4 million, and our passenger trips, last month, we did 37,300 passenger trips last month. So it's a lot of folks stepping on the buses and moving around, but we're projected about 445,000 this calendar year, which is about a 20... which is about a 20% increase over last year. Won't dive into this one. This is back to kind of how we're funded. We're a political subdivision of the state, but 60% of what we do is covered on the federal level. Small portion comes from the state. I won't have time to read all this. But basically, the local part, local match is really what's critical for us to be able to have access to federal funding. And I thank the city for the, you know, past five or six years, kind of where we've been. I know we've got some work to do as far as trying to find a dedicated revenue stream beyond, you know, kind of where we are today. But I'm excited about that possibility. Won't go through all this. That's the PDRTA family. So now all services are going well, a lot of growth, a lot of connectivity from the Pamplico, Johnsonville, Timminsville, Darlington to Florence, lower Florence County to Florence. And we know we need more of that. One thing we're not doing a lot of now is demand response service in Florence, in Florence, in Florence County. We are doing that in other counties, and that's where they call the day before to schedule rides. So we, the transit study is going to tell us a lot more about that and kind of what those needs are. So I know I'm out of time, but happy to answer any questions you may have. Appreciate the opportunity.
We're going to thank you for appearing before us, and we will invite you back if you want to come back again. We appreciate it as you have more updates. But one of the things that you stated, I do want to acknowledge, Ms. Victoria Nash, who's sitting in the audience as a part of the transportation to Barnes Street, as a part of Mears Youth Initiative, when we thought about doing this. And I reached out to her, and she gladly coordinated with you to get that. So I want to thank you especially for that, bringing that youth ridership into it. And so the public can know from these schools that transportation is a free transportation, that they can come from school to Barnes Street activities. So thank you, Ms. Nash, for coordinating that for you. And thank you, Don, for all that you're doing. Please come back in the future with us another update. We appreciate it more frequently, and that way we get... Thank you, Don.
All right, thank you.
So next, we'll move forward with our agenda. Next on our agenda, we do have Mr. Gerard Multry to speak to the council regarding the borders and commission. I'm not sure if I'm overlooking him, but I do not see Mr. Multry at this time. So at this time, we will move forward. Next, we have on our agenda, Ms. Connie Waters to speak to the council regarding dog parks in the city of Florence. Ms. Waters, please come forward.
Thank you for having me. I have my sister here who's my prop girl. And I'll say, may I introduce again Bono and his handler and partner, Investigator Prosser from the Florence County Sheriff's Department. Bono is a Belgian Malinois that was born in Poland. He has trained in the Army, Air Force, US Marshals, the FBI, and Homeland Security. He has been with the sheriff's office three years. I will get back to Bono and Investigator Riley in just a minute. Would you mind saying what you're going to California for next week? They are being honored nationwide.
I'm Sergeant Bean with the Florence County Sheriff's Office.
I'm going to ask that you come forward. Sergeant, can you come forward so they can see you on camera, please?
I'm Sergeant Bean with the Florence County Sheriff's Office. And I actually worked for the city about nine and a half years before I went to the sheriff's office. So right out about 29 years in law enforcement. But I am the supervisor over the Violent Street Crimes Task Force, which we are going to California next week in reference to getting a national certification for a Street Crimes Unit of the Year. And that is, that is a team members from the Florence Police Department and the Florence County Sheriff's Office that we combine, work together, and actually go hit the high crime areas.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. So I thought that was worth letting him speak. He told me about that yesterday on the phone. I was originally coming to speak about Florence's need for one or more dog parks. I was very pleased to find out that our great city has three dog parks proposed. I would like very much to speak at length to those in charge about the locations and sizes of these parks. At another time, 3,000 square feet is going to be way too small. And every one of the city parks has plenty of room for a nicely laid-out dog park, in my opinion. Now, back to Bono and Investigator Riley. My biggest, my idea for the biggest, most beautiful, and most distinguished and sought-after dog park is one that will honor fallen retired law enforcement canines. I have shared this vision with Corporal McKenzie of the Florence City Police, Steve Perry from the US Marshal's Office, and Sergeant Bean of the Florence County Sheriff's Office. They have all shown great support in making a huge dog park in honor and memory of the fallen and retired law enforcement dogs. A few weeks ago, I was reading an article about a sled dog that was killed in the line of duty. Yes, I thought about the sacrifice that hero made and how devastated his handler must have been and probably still is. With that story, I came up with the idea of the city creating a wonderful dog park, honoring fallen military and law enforcement dogs. It will be called In the Line of Duty Canine Memorial Park, Where a Dog Can Be a Dog. It will be huge, and it will be most definitely have a pond for dogs who love to swim. It will have a giant fenced-in area for dogs whose owners prefer them to be in an enclosed area. It will be so big that they can run freely, and it will also have access to the water feature through another gate. There will also be a separate but connected enclosed area for smaller dogs. And the connected areas can go for all the dog parks that are planned in the city. Levy Park is beautiful. It's going to be an amazing place to have a dog park. The remainder of the dog park will be a free range for the dogs who love to run and explore, who are in training for hunting, or who, like Bono, is in a vehicle 12 hours a day, and he needs a place to exercise and stretch their legs a bit. I can imagine he needs a lot of exercise. There will be agility courses and picnic tables and plenty of shade for both dogs and humans. There will also be plaques with pictures and descriptions of the fallen canine heroes through the park, and more and more will be added throughout the years. Residents will have the opportunity to purchase handmade, bone-shaped wooden plaques with the name of their deceased hound painted on them, and they will be displayed along the fence line of the enclosed area. And I think that would work in all of the parks of the city where the neighborhood, the local neighborhoods will go to one park in particular, and their dogs' names can be on those fences. And these will be made by local artists. I think we all know the perfect place for the dog park. It is all of the open area at the City of Florence Soccer Complex, the area that was abruptly taken away from the scores of people and dogs because of threats to the city by one or more bullies that the city bowed down to. Anyone who doesn't feel comfortable in an area with happy dogs running free can take themselves and their leash dog to the rail trail or literally anywhere else in the city or the world. I don't understand why anyone would be so selfish as to complain about the one and only place in Florence that dogs could run free. Please return this place to us as quickly as you took it away. I do understand that when soccer events are going on there, we will need to have restrictions on free-range area, such as walking around the complex with dogs on leash during those times. Of the dozens of times over the years that we took our three dogs, only a few times were there even events going on. Usually, it was pretty empty area. The city has done an amazing job in creating the rail trail exercise facilities, both indoor and outside, and revitalizing the downtown and so, so much more. I truly hope that you will consider the thousands of residents of Florence and the tens of thousands of travelers on I-95 who own dogs and need a place for their dogs to exercise. It is crucial to their mental and physical health. In the Line of Duty Canine Memorial Park can be the perfect place for a dog to be a dog. Do we want to be known just for having a bucky's? Or do we want to be known for the best dog park on I-95 and in the nation? And one that gives honor to the fallen and retired service dogs of this city, state, and nation? No bones about it, this is a doggone good idea.
Thank you, Ms. Waters.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving forward with our agenda. Next, we have Ms. Jane Bear to speak to the council regarding the recent dog attacks.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I'm Janie Bear, and today I'd like to address the control of dangerous dogs in Florence, specifically pit bull-type dogs, in response to the tragic July 10 mauling death of Karen Nelson, who was my son's music teacher many years ago. Like Karen, I'm an avid cyclist. I've had a scary close call with a charging pit bull while on a ride here. But fortunately, in my case, I got away. There is now no doubt in my mind that what happened to Karen could happen to me because of this and because of several pit bulls near my house who have acted very aggressively towards me and my dog while we were out walking. I now arm myself while riding and walking. I'm really sorry that it has come to this. This is not the kind of world I want to live in, but it's a reality. Before I go any further, I want you to know that I'm a dog lover, and I've never been harmed by one. As far as my experience with pit bulls go, I'd say about a third of them are benign and friendly. One-third are aggressive and hostile, and the middle third seem okay until maybe they're not. The dogs that attacked a 14-month-old child on Twin Church Road last January fell into the last category for me. I would never have guessed by looking at them that they would do such a thing. They looked so cute and cuddly to me. So I view pit bulls in the last category as being highly unpredictable. Although a certain amount of pit bulls may be completely benign, I believe that the majority have within them an innate potential for extreme aggression. And the statistics bear me out. Even though the definition of dangerous vicious dogs has been recently updated by the city, it did not go far enough in saving Karen's life. In my opinion, it's because the people who live in Brigadoon may have been reluctant to call and report the offending pit bull that had been seen chasing walkers, runners, bicyclists, and golf carts in an aggressive manner for many months. I read one report that said the dog had been reported before, but I don't know if it's accurate. The animal should have been wearing a muzzle if it had been deemed dangerous or vicious by authorities, but it wasn't wearing one, leading me to think that it wasn't reported twice. Our ordinances stipulate that a dog needs to be reported twice within 18 months to be deemed dangerous, after which it is required to wear a muzzle. Maybe neighbors didn't want to create friction with the dog's owners by calling the police. Or maybe they thought the dog would never really attack someone because we've been told over and over that pit bulls are loving docile pets if raised correctly. But whatever the reason, it was not wearing a muzzle on that fateful day, and the unthinkable happened. I think this reporting system is a weak link that needs to be addressed. This is why I'm in favor of breed-specific legislation that will require every owner of a pit bull-type dog to register it and then be required to follow certain rules, including wearing a muzzle when in public at all times. The UK just implemented a ban on XL bully dogs, which are a mix of pit bulls and English and American boxers, that will allow people to keep their dogs as long as they register them in order to get a certificate of exemption from the government. Please refer to the handout sheet I provided. And I think she's going to email you that later. It outlines rules for this ban. For more complete information, please refer to the websites I also provide it. I think it would be a very good model for us to follow here. I should point out that the fines and punishments for not registering your banned dog are severe there and are therefore a very strong motivator for people to comply with the new rules. Thus far in England, over 65,000 people, owners of these bully dogs, have applied for a certificate of exemption. So it seems to be working. Only if your dog is unregistered is it really banned and as such can be confiscated, confiscated among other penalties. One of the most important stipulations is that your bully dog must be neutered, ensuring that the breed will eventually die out in 10 to 15 years and will therefore no longer be able to maul someone to death every two weeks, as was happening there. Here in the US, someone is also fatally mauled by a pit bull about every two weeks, interestingly enough. Wearing a muzzle while in public is another very important stipulation for bully dogs in England. And this applies to all of them across the board with no exceptions, without anyone having to report them first. It should also be said that the UK is cracking down on the backyard breeders of pit bull-type dogs, which is badly needed to be done here also. I think the plan they've come up with in the UK is proactive rather than reactive. The latter is what I think we now have in Florence regarding the labeling of a dog as being dangerous after the fact. Oftentimes, a pit bull that has previously passed a temperament test with flying colors attacks someone without warning, which tells me that it's safer to consider this breed as being potentially dangerous in the first place. In my opinion, it's too late to designate a dog as being dangerous and vicious in situations where someone has already been harmed or, God forbid, killed in the same heinous way Karen lost her life. For at that point, it's time to put the dog down rather than put a muzzle on it. The sheer number of pit bull attacks in the US is hard to ignore. And in case you didn't know about it, pit bulls have killed another person besides Karen Nelson in the PD. A couple of years ago, a little girl in Timminsville was fatally mauled by pit bulls. And there may be other cases I don't know about. While researching pit bull attacks in South Carolina alone, I was very surprised at not only the number of them, but at how terrible they were. And then please refer to the information I sent you. These factual sites, which include hard data and news reports, are listed, and I urge you to take a look at them. What other things besides cyclists, whom any pit bulls view as being prey, have triggered fatal pit bull attacks? A baby in a bouncer. A boy dribbling his basketball in his driveway. A baby crying. A person out for a walk. As I'm sure you all know, Karen Nelson, the beloved music teacher at All Saints Episcopal Elementary School, had just left her driveway and had gone less than 30 feet when the offending pit bull overpowered his owner, broke free from his leash, and charged at Karen, knocking her off her bicycle, and then proceeded to maul her for a full 10 to 15 minutes while the owner tried frantically to get the dog off of her. Finally, the male owner had to come from his house around the corner to pull the dog off. Karen was later pronounced dead at the hospital. I hate to think what she went through in that length of time.
And, Ms. Bear, I'm going to ask that you...
All right, I have one more short paragraph.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I think that maulings like this will definitely keep happening in places where pit bulls are unregulated. The sad truth is that it could happen here again, given our large population of unneutered pit bulls with irresponsible owners who are often in denial about their dog's latent traits and who often let them run free or who underestimate their own ability to keep them under control while on a leash. Karen's case should be a wake-up call. Wanting to prevent just one child from being killed or disfigured for life by a pit bull-type of dog should be enough motivation to implement common sense breed-specific legislation.
Thank you so much for coming before us today. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are moving forward on our agenda. Next, we have Ms. James Waltswell to come speak to the council regarding spade and neuter ordinance and a spade and neuter clinic. Ms. Waltswell, thank you for being here.
I want to thank the friends of Karen Nelson who came today. I think we were all appalled by what occurred. And certainly, I am not here to mitigate what they're proposing. But what I am here is to talk about it's a multifaceted problem. But first of all, I want to thank the mayor, city manager, council, and all the city employees for the great job y'all did last week. You know, that storm could have been so much worse than it was, although I will tell you it flooded our rescue horse barn. But, you know, I think y'all all stepped forward. And I know that it was a lot of work to take care of. And I know that I saw police cars around Florence. I know you kept Adam Swindler busy in Public Works. But, you know, it was a community coming together and working together. And I think both Florence and our state have done a wonderful job in times of crisis to pull together, to work on a solution. And that's what I'm here today, is to talk about another crisis that's in our community. The Humane Society's been here since the 70s. It's a volunteer organization, and it was established to care for homeless and animals in our community. You know, unfortunately, we have reached a crisis with the pet overpopulation. The statistics really tell a sad story because in 2023, over 6.5 million animals entered shelters across America. And that's the fourth consecutive year of overpopulation. You know, unfortunately, Florence and South Carolina are no exception to this crisis. You know, phone call, the phone rings off the hook literally every day, my phone and the phone at the shelter, and I'm sure the phone at the county. Hallways are filled with temporary crates for animals. You know, there are not enough adoptions to overcome this situation. So many of them are, we think, are strays. But I will tell you that a lot of them are pet owners. you that a lot of them are pet owners asking for help with their animals. You know, I, I think anytime there's a, we are definitely in a time of financial hardship, and anytime people suffer, pets suffer, because often families have to make a choice between food on their table or getting medical care for their animals. There was a study that United Way did recently where it said forty percent of people in the whole PD, including Florence, every community in the PD, families are living at or below Alice, which is asset-limited, income-constrained, but employed. And so I think we need to come together as a community to resolve this situation. What we are proposing with the Florence Area Humane Society is a regional low-cost spay-neuter clinic that will help not only the city and county of Florence, but also surrounding counties in an, in an effort to lower the pet population. I mean, we just have to. The idea that I see is that city and county, we already have startup funds, and we're just asking the city and county come together to make this a reality. We have a facility that we're in the process of renovating. The idea would be that it would be as low-cost as possible. We are not in the business of making money. Our idea is that we would help the residents of our community by offering very, very vouchers, very low-cost spay-neuter, and also vaccines for their pets. I think one of the things that was spoken to by Janie is the fact that there is a huge overpopulation of bully breeds in our community. If you were to look at our shelter, probably eighty percent have some type of bully mix. I think it speaks for itself that there is currently, you know, Best Friends Animal Society is currently offering free spay-neuter of bully breeds. They want to do it here in Florence. They want to do a hundred and fifty in three days, and it's free. It's offered to the residents of our community. I would like for us to be able to continue that, so that we can lower those numbers. You know, the other alternative is, you know, euthanizing everything, but if we don't start at the root of the problem, which is two things, unfettered breeding and no avenues for spay-neuter, there is no low-cost spay-neuter clinic that offers as many services to people in this community. I would love to have your support. I would love to talk with you more about it. We have, currently have a financial plan. We're working to expand that to a three-year financial plan, and as I said, we have startup cost, and we're really ready to roll it out. And hopefully, you know, I want to work with these friends and other people in our community so that we can stop this at the source. We've got to stop the reproduction, and, you know, we, we are definitely love what y'all do to help our community become a better place, and we want to be a part of that. And I thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you for coming before us today. We appreciate you. As we move forward with our agenda, we are going to our introductions of resolutions. We want to proceed with resolutions. Our first resolution, we've resolution number twenty-two-four dash thirty-one, a resolution to proclaim August the fourth through the tenth, twenty-twenty-four as National Health Care Week in the city of Florence. And I'll expect that resolution to be read, so the council will know it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A resolution to proclaim August fourth, fourth through tenth, twenty-two, twenty-four as National Health Center Week in the city of Florence. Whereas for over fifty years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive primary and preventative healthcare in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system. And whereas individuals are able to receive patient-focused, comprehensive healthcare services, including preventative primary care and dental care, case management, behavioral health services, maternal and childcare, and enabling services from community-based facilities across the Palmetto State. And whereas in addition to contributing to improved health in our communities, these facilities help lower the cost of healthcare by reducing inappropriate emergency room and hospital utilization and have a positive impact on the communities they serve. And whereas community health centers continue to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to healthcare access, including geography, income, and insurance status. And whereas during National Health Center Care Week, we celebrate Hope Health and their vital role in making the Florence community a better place and recognize their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the city of Florence does hereby proclaim August fourth through tenth, twenty-twenty-four as National Health Center Week throughout the city and encourage all residents to recognize the important contributions of community health centers in safeguarding the health and improving the quality of life for the residents of the city of Florence.
Council, you've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your position?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing and all those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed, like sign. And I'm going to come down as one of the board members.
National Health Center Week is just a very important week for Hope Health. We are one of twenty-four community health centers in the state. We are one of the largest. We serve five counties and the majority of our offices are here in Florence County. We see people regardless of their ability to pay, invite access to care to those who can't do care anywhere else, but we make sure it's quality. Anyone who has insurance for, doesn't want insurance, or has lack of technical insurance, we are here for them. So at Hope Health, I am very proud to be an employee here and see service. We see about sixty hours a week a year, and we provide thirty-two different services. So thank you for this recognition. I'm appreciative to be there at Hope Health and enjoy it.
Thank you. And also, I do want to reiterate the importance of healthcare centers, is that even here in the city of Florence, we are a part of, I say, the medical hub of the PD. Because you have McLeod and also MRC here, in the past, what we found throughout the nation, a lot of time people will attend, come to the ER to seek what we call should, what should have been preventative or primary care. So we are glad that Hope Health is here, because, because of these two larger medical institutions, they can now send patients to Hope Health and also to Mercy Medicine, so that the number of ER visit can be decreased. And by decreasing the number of ER visit, you can also facilitate faster service for those who are really in critical need of care. So thank you again, Nicole, especially for all that you do to make sure that healthcare system. And I think it's important, not only at a local level, I want you to know that she's recognized on a federal level and was recognized in Washington for her, her personal hard work on behalf of healthcare. So thank you for all that you do. We appreciate you. Next, we have resolution number twenty-two-four dash thirty-two. It's a resolution to recognize August as Black Business Month in the city of Florence. Would you please read the resolution?
Whereas black-owned businesses play an integral role in the economic and cultural fabric of the city of Florence, contributing to the prosperity, diversity, and vibrancy of our community. And whereas Black Business Month was founded in two thousand and four by journalist John William Templeton and engineer Frederick E. Jordan to acknowledge and appreciate the vital contributions of black-owned businesses to the economy and to encourage the development and support of black entrepreneurship. And whereas the city of Florence acknowledges the historical challenges and systemic barriers that black business owners have faced, including limited access to capital markets and resources, and is committed to addressing these inequities to foster a more inclusive and equitable business environment. And whereas the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce, through its minority and outreach director, has shown exceptional commitment and dedication in supporting the growth and success of black-owned businesses in our community. And whereas the Greater Florence of, sorry, and whereas recognizing August as Black Business Month in the city of Florence will promote greater awareness of the achievements and contributions of black business owners, encourage residents to support local black-owned businesses, and inspire the next generation of entrepreneurs. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Florence hereby recognizes August as Black Business Month and encourages all residences to celebrate the contributions of black-owned businesses in the community. Resolve this twelfth day of August, twenty-twenty-four.
You've heard a reading of the resolution. What is your position?
So moved.
We have a motion in the second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing and all those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed, like sign. Let the record reflect that resolution has passed, and I expect Councilwoman to go forward to present.
It's for stepping up and always being a community officer for our black businesses. There are a limited access resources, and Les here makes sure he provides these resources to our entrepreneurs in their quest to be successful. So I want to thank you so much, Les, for all that you do. For those who don't know, we do business, networking business, every week. Les here right here helps me and we try to commit with our businesses to ensure that they have all the resources and capital they need to be successful. So again, thank you for all your dedication, hard work you do, and commitment to our students. Thank you.
Yes, please welcome the speaker.
Thank you, first of all, Mayor and Council, for your generous consensus on this lovely day. First of all, I want to say that advocacy and help for black businesses is not just my job, it's my life. It's a part of my life, it's part of who I am, and I was just blessed to, to be able to step into a position that they need to do what I love so and passionately. So they have, they have the city to stand behind that. It's such a big deal. Black-owned businesses are a big part of our nation. We're talking about three-point-seven million businesses. We're talking about a hundred and sixty-one thousand with more, one more employees. We're talking about billions of dollars in, in daily revenue. So, so thank you again, Council. I'm going to tell a brief story real quick, or the only reason why I'm passionate. Years ago, flashback to the Jim Crow era, had a grand uncle who started a business in rural King Street, South Carolina. And unfortunately, he began to make business, began to make revenue. And one night, some, you know, he was greeted, his family was greeted by torches, and they told him if he didn't, you know, cease and desist of that business, that someone in his family made disappear. And so that kind of destroyed a, a generational wealth for he and his family. So we fast forward to the day, and we thank ourselves and thank the city. Thank you, thank you, thank you all for your generous recognition, and thank you again.
Thank you. Next, we have resolution number twenty-two-four thirty-three. A resolution to, of recognition of Ms. Ashley Briggs. Can we have a reading of the resolution?
A resolution of recognition for Ashley S. Briggs. Whereas Ashley S. Briggs is a graduate of South Florence High School, where she excelled both as an athlete and a student leader, setting a precedent for excellence early in her academic career. And whereas Ms. Briggs holds a master's degree in journalism and public affairs from American University and a bachelor's degree in mass communication from Wentworth University, demonstrating her commitment to academic achievement and professional development in the field of journalism. And whereas Ms. Briggs has served communities with distinction throughout her career, including in Charleston, South Carolina, where she landed her first job as a digital journalist and covered significant local issues in the Low Country community. And whereas Ms. Briggs continued her career progression as a news producer in Columbia, South Carolina, where she became a respected mentor, newsroom leader, and advocate for her colleagues, producing stories that resonated with the Midlands community. And whereas Ms. Briggs' dedication and talent led her to further success in Washington DC, where she served as the weekend evening news producer, contributing to multiple special newscasts and earning recognition with two Emmy awards and a Dateline Award from the Washington DC Society of Professional Journalist, Journalist Chapter. And whereas furthering her career, Ms. Briggs has distinguished herself as a highly accomplished news producer at Queen City News in Charlotte, North Carolina, earning recognition for her exceptional contributions to broadcast journalism. And whereas Ms. Briggs is an active member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated and the National Association of Black Journalists, embodying a commitment to community and professional organizations that support diversity and excellence in journalism. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the city of Florence does hereby recognize Ashley S. Briggs for her outstanding achievements in journalism, her commitment to serving and informing communities, and her contributions to the field of broadcast news. Resolve this twelfth day of August, twenty-twenty-four.
You've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your position?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let the record reflect that the resolution has passed, and we ask Councilman Smith to please come forward.
First of all, I want to thank God for the opportunity that our students are doing this, and such a moment, and my family, and also thank you to the council, which has had for the unity of the resolution. Florence has a special heart, a special place in my heart, and if it wasn't for this evening, I would not be the woman that I am. So thank you.
Next, we have resolution number twenty-two-four thirty-four. It's a resolution certifying buildings as an abandoned building site pursuant to the South Carolina Abandoned Building Revitalization Act. And I'm going to give them a moment to. All right. Carolina Abandoned Building Revitalization Act Title XII, Chapter Sixty-Seven, Section Twelve Dash Sixty-Seven Dash One Hundred of the South Carolina Code of Law as amended regarding the property located at one-hundred-and-sixty-one North Court Street, Florence, South Carolina, Florence County Tax Map Number Parcel Nine Zero Zero Seven Three Dash One Five Dash Zero Two Nine.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in the second. We hear from Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is a resolution that will certify the buildings that were located on North Court Street. That's in association with Urban, the Urban Square Project. They submitted their letter of intent with the state a while back, and as a part of this process, passing this resolution is what kind of completes all the documentation they have to do. So they have started grading out there, unfortunately, came in the hurricane and all the rain that we've had. So we're excited about that, but again, working on this with the resolution for the abandoned building portion.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing and all those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed, like sign. Let, let the record reflect that the resolution has passed. Next, we have resolution number twenty-two-four thirty-five. It's a resolution of the City Council approving downtown redevelopment grant for a first quarter for the fiscal year of twenty-five. This resolution will be discussed in the second session. Next, we have report to our council. Next, we have Department of Environmental Services to provide a water system up, oh, let me go back up to, we had to go over our ordinance. So we'll go back to them, and then we'll come back. We have bill number twenty-two-four dash thirteen for a first reading. It's an ordinance providing an issuance of sales of combined waterworks and sewage system revenue bonds of the city of Florence, South Carolina, and other matters related thereto. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. We hear from Mr. Davis.
Mayor, members of council, thank you. As stated, this is water and sewer revenues, bond revenues up to two-hundred-and-seventy million dollars. These funds will allow us to increase our surface water treatment plant or expand it ten million gallons, and it'll also work, help us work with Jeffries Creek Sanitary Sewer Interceptor. As you know, we are, we have to increase our surface water up to ten million gallons because of growth and development in Florence. Fortunately, Florence has become the place to be lately. Fortunately, Florence has become the place to be lately relative to economic development. In the last several years, we had a number of notable expansions in economic development. We had our Niagara Plant, now we have ASC and others. With that, it comes also growth in housing development. We have about 5,000 different permits online now. That would certainly have an impact on our system. We're trying to get ahead of that curve. This will allow us to do so. Jeffries Creek, that sewer line there, that interceptor line, has long been an issue of concern for staff. We've looked at that as far back as 2011. We continue to look at that project when we expanded with the Timminsville system in 2014 there. And this will allow us, again, to remove that out of the Jeffries Creek Basin there, a lot of the discharges that we're having there, some of the stormwater issues, we can mitigate those items. Again, the bond is about up to $270 million. We do have first try, and we'll have Ms. Amy Vitner, she's the managing director of First Try and Advisors, to go over our financial plan with council. And also remind council that we did present said information to our finance committee that's chaired by Councilman McCall. We also have Councilman Smith and Braddock. This information was presented to the committee on July 31st.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, for inviting us, inviting me here today. So as Manager Davis said, we're gonna jump into a little bit of background information on the upcoming bond sale and some of the numbers and financial information behind it. So this is a continuation of a discussion we had last summer regarding the various projects and capital improvement, improvement plan of the water and sewer system. So just a recap of where we were last year at this time, in back in 2023, the city issued $33.5 million of a, what was then a $537 million water and sewer plan, $537 million of projects to be funded over a period of 10 years. At that same, at that point last year, you also had amended your 10-year rate structure on utilities to the rate increases that are on the presentation before you there. So with some, and this was to accommodate that higher level of borrowing and the cost of the projects that, that, that were being contemplated at the time. So you'll see, we had some pretty, fairly somewhat larger rate increases in the years 2025 through 2028, and then tapering those off in 2029 and 2030. As we fast forward a year and, and the projects themselves have been a little bit more scoped out, that CIP has now expanded to $676 million over a 10-year period, and we'll, I'll have a breakdown of that in a moment. So the question before us was, that was asked of us is, well, can we still, can the City of Florence continue to afford this level of funding, this level of projects with the rate structure and rate, the utility rates that were adopted last year? And so we took a look at that, we looked at the timing of when these projects would come online. We worked very closely with the city's rate consultant, and who is in the process of updating their, their financial analysis. But the early indication, at least in the short term, is that yes, we are not going to need a, a rate increase in the short term for, and so basically, the rates that were adopted last year would be adequate. However, looking back, looking into the future, when we get to 20 years, 2029, 2030, 2031, at that point in time, we may be looking at a, at a rate increase at that point in And then, of course, you know, that's also highly dependent on the city's annual operating results. So, you know, so this is something that we'll look closely at year by year to determine, you know, whether, whether additional rate increases may need, may need to be required. Just in terms of what's changed since last year, and we have a breakdown, so the project costs for Phase Two, which are the Surface Water Treatment Plant Expansion, the Jeffries Creek Sewer Interceptor, Phase One, and then the PFAS project, the Surface Water Treatment Plant Expansion has increased from 143 million to 210 million. And the PFAS project is estimated, and the costs have been estimated to increase from 40 million to 50 million. The Jeffries Creek Sewer Interceptor Phase One project has not changed. In addition, there are some sources that have been identified. So right now, there's $15 million in grants that are anticipated that could be applied towards the Surface Water Treatment Plant Expansion. $5 million, a $5 million grant is already in hand, and I believe the city is anticipating that they'll find out about another $10 million in grant money later, later this year. The city was also able to secure a $24 million SRF loan from the state, so that would be applied to the Jeffries Creek Sewer Interceptor project. And so the balance that we're looking to, to seek authorization for for Phase Two, Two is 200, 270 million is what we're asking for, but you can see 266 million dollars of projects in total that would be, that would be authorized to be issued in one or more phases. And we say that because right now, we know that the PFAS is, the, the timing on that, there's some uncertainty around it. So we don't want to have the city borrow funds too early for that. So what we're, what we're proposing currently is to, 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 at least for this next issuance, to borrow the difference for the Surface Water Treatment Plant Expansion and the Jeffries Creek Sewer Interceptor Phase One. Also looking out into the future, the other large project that's out there is the wastewater management facility expansion, so the expansion of the wastewater facility plant. And that has grown in scope and size and amount to, from 180 million to 250 million. The timing of that is very much in flux, and I think is heavily dependent on economic development. So, so, so that's just one to keep, to keep an eye on there. And so what we look at when we're looking at affordability and going back to the, the initial question is, is your current utility rate structure adequate to be able to afford the new debt? What we did is we looked and sought, to look to see what did, what were we projecting last year in terms of debt service? So the red line that's on that chart, that reflects the debt service from last year at this time, based on the scope of projects and the amounts that we were anticipating at that point in time. And what we've tried to do for this Phase Two borrowing is structure the debt in a way so that the debt service is either in line or slightly below where we were last year. And so just look, so just to orient you from what you're looking at here, the blue bars on that chart, that's the existing debt service in the utility system. The light blue, which is the tiny sliver in there, that's the $24 million SRF loan borrowing. The orange is what we're talking about issuing in this next phase, which would be approximately 210 million of the 270 million authorization for the, for the wastewater treatment plant expansion and the Jeffries Creek Interceptor. And then the green is, that is the wastewater management expansion. And so it's not until you get into that final project, the wastewater, that, that we go above, and that's, and that's where, you know, consideration of some additional rate increases, when you go to adopt your next, you know, 10 years of, you know, your next 10-year plan of, of utility rates, that's when we'd be closer in time to know, to make a recommendation there with your rate consultant as to what those rate increases might need to be. So, so we feel pretty comfortable with the current rates that were adopted last year. We're not recommending any amendments to those at this time. We think the amount of debt that is being contemplated, you know, can be afforded within your, you know, current plan of finance. And, and so I think as we get further out in time, you know, four or five years from now, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll be looking at this pretty closely year by year, but I think as we get closer in time to that wastewater, the wastewater plant expansion, that's when we would probably look a little bit more closely at the, the need to increase rates. So, any questions on?
Any questions at this time?
I got one.
Chair recognizes Councilman Mr. Jackson.
When will the Phase Two start?
I believe the, and Mr. Hemingway, what you have that, but I believe the, the engineering and design phase is almost complete. And so my understanding, it will be later this year, so if we issue the debt in the fall, that should be around the time that construction would start, and you may have a better answer.
Yeah, the construction project expansion will start in November, and it'll be for five years under complete. Jeffries Creek, really in final design for the Jeffries Creek project, we will finish that up in March of next year, and then that'll begin sometime after next spring.
Are we expecting any more additional increases?
Hopefully, it'll depend on what we do when we put out on the projects for bid. Prayerfully, those projects will come in line, and those, we won't receive escalated costs from the contractors.
Okay. But if we do, where are we at that point? Because we only doing 270, so do we have any extra money?
We're seeking other revenues options, so we're still doing other grant opportunities to assist with both of these projects. So there's still the potential funding opportunity that might be available that we haven't received final notice from yet.
That's all my questions.
Any other questions?
I have a question for clarification.
Chair recognizes Councilman McCall.
I have a question for clarification for City Manager. And just so, so I guess it was clear for the public and for, in general, this here, the bond that we're getting ready to vote on, this is only pertaining to new or additions to the system.
This is additions, correct.
This does not take care of any of the problems we have now, or, or any of the, I guess deferred maintenance we have.
Deferred maintenance, this doesn't include any deferred maintenance. This is all new projects. In essence, this is to upgrade our system so that we can continue to address the demand on the system.
Any other questions? Chair recognizes Proton.
Scotty, the Jeffries Creek Interceptor, we're under a dehec order to address that sewer line that runs through Jeffries Creek. So this is, while you talk about new, and the amount of the Jeffries Creek Interceptor in this is 120, no, 45?
45 million.
45 million. So 45 million of it is been a problem that's been plaguing us for, what, 20 years?
Correct.
So, so in that sense, it is a addressing an existing concern in the sewer system within our community, particularly the sensitive ecosystem that runs through Jeffries Creek, to help alleviate the pressure on the system by adding another line, and I think it will run down Second Loop, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Taking wastewater from the west side of town, instead of running it through Jeffries Creek, creating a new pathway down Second Loop that's underground, that'll tie it in at Urbey Street, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so that, while it's a new system, a new line, it's designed to address an ongoing existing problem that I believe we've been under order from dehec for quite some time.
Yes, yes, and we've been looking at that system, as mentioned, since about 2011 there, and this will certainly get us the ability, the funding, to address that issue. And certainly, we've heard from the community in that area, particularly Jeffries Creek community in that area, dealing with that issue there. So this would address that issue. And again, if I could, Madam Mayor, to address another question, Councilman McCall asked about maintenance on the system. At last council meeting, if you remember, we brought forth some consultant that looked at our system, the complete system, water and sewer utility system. They acknowledged that we needed about $37.2 million in improvements to the system there and repairs to the system. Staff is trying to address that issue. We're working with some existing funding, so the operational budgets, we are steering money directly to maintenance there. And there's some grant funds, our staff has been very diligent in getting grant funds throughout state and federal funds. We will, should hear about a grant in the next coming weeks or months from the federal government that will allow us to address that $37 million. This, those funds will not come out of this bond, so we will do, use those funds, grant dollars and existing dollars in our budgets to address that $37 million worth of maintenance and repair.
And I do want to make sure, clear and simple, long and short, this is some issues with the system that was deferred, what we call deferred maintenance. And now that we've done the studies and we see where they're, what those deferred maintenance are, we have addressed it in the sense that we're now securing funding, and we are waiting a few, official approval of some funding that would be federal to address those issues. So it's all just maintenance things that was deferred that we're gonna take care of with those funds. And then you're looking at, the next step is suspension and upgrade with other future monies.
Yes.
So that's just the long and short for us where we're at. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes.
Just for, for information, I know there will be some customers saying, okay, what about the brown water? I was talking to some of the staff upstairs, and they were telling me of this process of flushing, and could you just go over that so they understand that we are working on all of it?
Yes, well, as, as discussed, we've discussed at length several times about iron, high iron content. The City of Florence has a dual system. We have wells and we have surface water there. So when, particularly our wells, when we're getting water, it's a lot of iron in there, and sometimes that iron will coat our pipes. There, one method that we use to get rid of that iron, certainly we use chemicals, we use filtration systems, things of those nature, but we also flush those lines, and, and we flush it through our hydrants and the other areas there to clear out a lot of that iron. The water's certainly surf safe to drink. Sometimes, if you see it, higher iron content, it may not look visually appealing, we certainly understand that, and we are addressing those issues. Some of the maintenance that we'll be doing on the system at 37 million is designed to address those issues as well.
And just to add to that, when you think about that, one of the things we've talked about is what we call looping the system.
Yes.
And so we have some areas where the lines more or less date in, and in order to improve it, what has to occur is that you take those lines and run them into a loop, and that causes that water to continually to circulate, which prevents sediment from getting in the bottom, and then you have that major rush, frequent, you know, raising it up. So that's a part of what, when you start hearing more about looping, that is what we'll be referring to, having that loop so the water continuously circulate. Do we have any other questions in relation to that? If not, if there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. And opposed like sign. They reflect that the bill has passed first reading. Next, we have bill number 2024-14 for first reading.
It's an ordinance to annex and zone RG-2 Phase Two of Smithfield Subdivision identified as Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number 00100-01-337 through 00100-01-380. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. At this time, we're here for Mr. Dudley.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is Phase Two of the Smithfield subdivision. They are requesting annexation into the city. This is consistent with the development agreement that was passed that requires them to annex in as, as they finished the phases of development. They are requesting to zone RG3. There, it's currently about 45 lots here. It is subdivided into approximately 45 lots, and Planning Commission did unanimously vote six to zero to recommend this zoning designation.
You've heard Mr. Douglas during the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And opposed like sign. Let it reflect that the bill number 2024-14 has passed first reading. Next, we have bill number 2024-15 for first reading. It's an ordinance to annex and zone CG, the lot at 525 South Avonese Road identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 00074-01-334. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. At this time, we're here for-
At this time, we're here for Mr. Dudley.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another annexation request. This one is the current KJ's Market on the corner of Ebenezer and Pine Needles Road. As you can see, the parcel is outlined here. They are requesting the zoning of Commercial General, which is consistent with the use as well as the lots in the vicinity there. The Planning Commission did unanimously vote six to zero to recommend this zoning as well.
You've heard the report from Mr. Dudley, any questions? Oh, we have two. Okay, so Councilman Javale.
Can you pop that image back up, please, Chair?
Sure.
So the area that's coming in is the area on, with red on either side, correct?
That's correct. So essentially, the KJ's Lot itself there and not the out parcels.
So is the same developer or owner have the out parcels as well?
I'm not sure. I'd have to look into that. I could definitely get an update for you on that.
Yeah, if you would, to see who owns that property between the KJ's and Ebenezer and Pine Needles.
Sure, absolutely.
Just to see what their plans are as well.
Are there any other discussions?
I have a question.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neese Smith Jackson.
What, what is around there that's connected?
As you can see, just across the street there, that's part of the Grove Plan Development in the blue there. And they are currently inside city limits. So continuity is provided across Pine Needles there.
Okay. And so that store is the only one so far that's requesting it?
That's.
And we don't know why? Do we know why?
They requested city services. I believe police protection was one of the primary ones.
Okay, and how long has that store been open?
Oh goodness, quite a while.
That's why I was just wondering why not, okay.
And also just to add, they just did a new remodeling and reopening of their store this year. It's during the summer that they redone it. They just upgraded that one. They also remodeled the one that's located off of Pampico Highway. So the development itself, they're going through doing different things. What they're doing, so they're doing, they've got some other stores. One other one that they're looking at to redo some things too. All right, we've heard the report. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Let reflect that the bill has passed first reading. That completes our introduction of ordinance. Next, we will move forward to report to council. We have reported to council, Department of Environmental Services to provide a water system update. This is a report. Scotty, do we have them?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, speaking of our water system, we wanted to give clarity and transparency to our system. We've been working diligently on this system for several years now. Again, at last meeting, we had environmental engineering firm to talk about the system. Today, we have formerly known as DEHEC, here Environmental Services. Of course, a state agency that monitors all water systems in the city of Florence and they'll give you a report.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank y'all for inviting us over today. We do appreciate the opportunity to come before you and give you a little bit of update about your system. As you know, the city of Florence does operate a water plant system here. And they also operate the town of Timmerville. So your last inspection was a satisfactory inspection. Now, these inspections are done out of the Columbia office since it is primarily a surface water facility. Here in the Florence office, we still do groundwater facilities around and throughout the Florence, Chesterfield, Marion, Dillon and counties, as well as some of the outlying counties as well. So just to give you a little bit of brief rundown about, in case you didn't know, what we look for when we come to do an inspection. I did jot down a few notes for you. And if you have any questions, we'll do that. The first one is, everybody always asks us, do we notify you when we come? There's nothing says that we have to, but we try to make sure that we do give you an opportunity to know, hey, we're going to be there Tuesday by calling you on Monday. I mean, sometimes we give you a little bit more time. But we do want you to know that we don't have to notify you, but we do try to make sure that the right operators are there. Okay, some of the stuff that the inspectors will look for, and I'll try to be brief because I know I don't want to take up too much of your time, is we actually do, when we come in, we'll introduce ourselves and we'll have a brief pre-meeting and pre-inspection meeting and sit down with you and show, tell you kind of what we're looking for. We're going to look at your paperwork to make sure that everything is done on a daily basis that's supposed to be done, that the samples that are taken are logged in correctly and that the person who logged them in is certified to log them in, okay? Our inspectors are going to look at the equipment operation. Make sure that if you say you have two pumps running, that those, both the pumps are operational and can be put online at the same time. We're going to look at the maintenance of equipment. So you have touched on several of these things already. And we're glad to hear that you're working on some of the infrastructure. Because as we get older, our infrastructure gets older. And we have to remember that it takes money to keep our infrastructure up and moving. We will check the cleanliness of the facilities. And what I mean by that is we're going to look at, how is the grass kept cut around the plant? Is the, is the grass kept cut around the wells? Is the painting kept up on all the piping? Is there any piping that needs to be replaced? And stuff like that as we go along. So we're going to check the security of the facilities. Because everybody knows that you want your water, of most things, to be secure, especially around some of the well sites, which you do have several of as well. So you want to make sure that those well sites stay locked and secure and they have fencing around it that will not allow anyone to climb over. We're also going to look at the operating requirements of that, meaning that you have the operators of grade there that are required for your facility to be on site when they are on site, okay? And then we are going to review the annual audit for the water loss percentage. You probably know that you have to do an annual report that says, we produced this amount of water, we sold this amount of water, we used this amount of water for fire flow. Where's the rest of it at? And we can apply that to leaks or possible meters misreading and stuff like that. So we look at that too. We will review the consumer confidence report and ensure that the report was available as required. Every year, the city of Florence has to do a consumer confidence reports, which you have to take examples of your water for certain criteria that are on a consumer confidence report by federal law and supply that to your constituents. You guys do that. Y'all do that through the website, I believe, and through mailings as well. It can be done through mailings, placed on the website, or can be hand delivered if you have people that you can't reach, nobody through the internet or the mail out. It can be done, and it can be published in a local newspaper as well. The city of Florence is doing a great job to supply water to the customers that you have. You mentioned the red water. We work with the city a lot. If we get a call, we'll call these guys and say, hey, we got a red water complaint. Can y'all go take care of it by flushing or whatever the case may be? I was glad to hear that you are going to look into the looping because that'll help that red water system as much as possible. And so that is something that we like to say, we're from the government, we're here to help, but we're also not here to hinder. So if we ever need, the Florence office is staying the same. They'll still be right up the road is Chevay Street on the second floor. And that's where we'll be for right now, okay? I do do the, I am the team, the drinking water team lead for Florence and for Sault Ste. offices. So if you need anything, Michael knows how to get in touch with me in a heartbeat. So we can, we can help you if we need to, if we need to. We love to work together with our facilities because we are here to help you to stay in compliance by assisting you as much as actually enforcing you, okay? Yes, ma'am.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes.
Your grading system, what tier is it? Is it four tier, good, excellent? I mean, how do you?
We have satisfactory, needs improvement, and unsatisfactory, okay? I think the last two for, that I looked at for Florence have been satisfactory. We will rate it satisfactory when we go in and we see something that might just need painting. We'll note that, but you'll still get a satisfactory overall rating. If there's something that needs to be, a fence that needs to be fixed, we'll still rate you as an overall satisfactory. Again, we do like to work with you as much as we can. We still have guidelines, but we like to work with all our municipalities and cities as much as possible so that we make sure that everybody's on the same page and we're all working to the protection of the environment.
Any other questions? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neese Smith Jackson.
Thank you for coming. I think a lot of our voters and constituents need to hear that we're working closely with you to ensure that our water quality is the best that it can be. So thank you very much and for letting us know that we were rated satisfactory, which is the best we can get. So that's, yeah, so that's, that's a good thing to know. And thank you for coming and sharing that with us.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. And if there's any questions that you have, you can contact, forgot to introduce myself, I'm David Thompson. But you can contact, you can reach me through the Florence office. They know how to get in touch with me. Or if you call the Florence office and ask for Bonnie Tanner. She is your local inspector for this area. And she works for me and we stay in contact very often, so, okay?
And what did you say the address was here in Florence?
It's one forty-five, and I get this wrong, I pronounce it wrong all the time because I'm from Sault Ste. Chevay Street?
Chevay, Chevay, Chevay.
Chevay, yeah. I told you, I get it wrong all the time. I still say something with a P, so, you know.
Thank you, because when I heard the street, I was like, what?
Yeah, okay. What is it? Chevay Street. Chevay, Chevay Street, okay. I've been coming up here for three years and still getting it wrong.
Any other questions?
Again, it was brief, Mayor. Thank you for, thank you for having us.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that report as well. Next, we proceed to report to Councilwoman Mayor. I want to, first of all, this, based on the report that we just got, I want to thank all of the staff, but especially to our Water Utility Department. Thank you for all that you do to assure that we have safe drinking water. And so we truly appreciate all the time and effort that's being placed there. So thank you for that. And also I want to thank everyone. As you know, we just came through a time period with Tropical Stone Debbie, who came through and I'm being a woman of faith. I'm thankful that we were spared some major catastrophic events that some others are experiencing. So my present thoughts are with them. But I would like to thank you to the staff that stayed on call, answering calls, driving around, watching to see how our condition was. But also for the fast response, when we had trees down, how quickly those trees were taken out. I think Michael needs someone here. So that's quick response there, y'all. But thank you especially to the staff. I do also want to acknowledge that AccuWeather and also the Weather Channel both came through Florence at that time period. And it was great that we had our local media, who is also very on point in making sure our citizens knew where we stood and also were excited. With excited, the fact that people who were signed up were able to receive text messages and alert, that was really good. And also on behalf of our social media effort, and I know that goes into our marketing, especially through Amanda and from our city manager's office, thank y'all for all that y'all did to make sure our citizens stayed abreast of what was occurring through those strong time period. And also, we had the honor of going to Greenville, where we received the award that you just saw from the Municipal Association, from the JP Raleigh Economic Development Award. So thank you too for the Municipal Association for acknowledgement of the efforts and work that's being done here on the city of Florence. I believe as a city, we build on the efforts of the generations or the foundation, the other leadership presented to us. So I would say this award is built on the fact that the leaders before us had the vision to do the things that they did to position us here today. So thank you to them as well. And also, we had the honor of serve late celebrating our second annual PD Youth Day here in Florence, which was well attended. And I would like to acknowledge that from that, we also had organizations that came as for us from Columbia, South Carolina to be a part of it. And also born out of that, Columbia is now, they want to start doing youth days there. We had a group that came down from the Spartanburg Greenville area because I had the honor of being a part of the Furman Leadership Fellowship. And so things that are being done here in Florence are being viewed, not only locally, but throughout our state and on a national level. So I just want to thank everyone for all that each one of us do to make sure the city of Florence is so presentable. But also to our citizens during this time period of the storm, thank you. Because one of the things that we do have issue with is things being in our stormwater. I think if you remember back last year, one of the reports showed that we had concrete that had been pouring down in our stormwater system. We had bricks in our stormwater system, things that does not belong there. And I'm going to encourage our citizens so that we can continue to make progress, be very mindful of the things that we put out around our catch basins. If you have yard debris, please back it up. And I would like to thank the citizens who actually went out and helped clean up the stormwater areas on their own. So I would like to say that Florence is a good place to be and it's a good time to be in Florence because of things that we all do. So that is my report for this month. I want to simply just thank everyone for the part you, each of you playing to make the city of Florence a better place. So next, we'll move forward with our report from our committees. Next, we have a report from the Chair of the Business Development Committee.
Thank you. The Business Development Committee met on July twenty-five and we had a conversation following the meeting that was held on the public workshop, that was July eleven, for the Chevay Street corridor. I mean, excuse me, the Lucas Street corridor. And there was a lot of input on the different design elements that we're going to be looking at. We talked about traffic calming designs. We talked about a number of other strategies on how that corridor, that would be essentially from Urbey Street all the way out to Highway fifty-two, Casual, that stretch of Lucas Street there and how it can be transformed into a very welcoming approach into the city of Florence when you look at the Casual-Lucas intersection being so close to I ninety-five. And so extensive amount of conversations held around that. And then we also had a general discussion on infrastructure related projects, updates, as well as some trail update discussions that were done at that time. Is there anything further? I think that's basically all that we covered at that time.
Thank you for that report. Next, we have a report from the Community Development Committee Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our committee met July thirty-first. And Councilman Clayson Cole and myself and staff, we, we met and talked about efforts to bring our community together. As we grow as a city, we are excited about growth, but we also want to keep the small town feel, finding ways to bring us together so that we could do, we're doing a lot of those things now, but going into the various parts and doing those things. Also, we talked about fine tuning our five-point plan for crime. We're still tweaking that. And we also talked about railroad quiet zones. We received information on, on, on that. And we will look more on that. And I think that was it. That covers all four.
Thank you for that report. Next, we have a report from the Chair from the Marketing and Public Relations Committee.
Yes, Madam Mayor. My question to everyone, have you received your texts? Have you been receiving texts from Cy? I guess mine, I know when we have water bowl advisories, when they lifted. I know everything because I subscribe to Cy. So if Cy is not programmed in your phone, people get Cy on your phone so you'll know what's going on at all times when it comes to the city of Florence. So make sure, eight five five nine six four thirty-nine twenty-nine, program it in your phone. Get, once you program it, say, hi Cy or hey Cy. He'll come back with a link for you guys to go on and really download and make sure you're getting your texts. It is so important to be in the know when it comes to this kind of stuff, especially when it comes to the city of Florence and everything that's happening. So we want everybody to be in the know. We want to keep you in the loop. So that's why it's so important to download our AI-powered chat box. So please, so since July, Cy has engaged with a total of four hundred and thirty-five residents with a total of over a thousand communications. So we want to encourage it, we want to get this number to grow. We're paying for this service to help you. Uh, we're paying for this service to help you to be transparent, to make sure that you understand everything that goes on in the city of Florence. So please, please, please make sure you do it. Um, also, CU, fall application is now open, uh, and the deadline is September the eighth. So remember, if you want to sign up for CU, the last day is September the eighth. Uh, this time, we, they are going into a seven-week course, uh, to make sure that you get all of the pertinent information you need and to understand the interworkings of the city. So this is very important and it provides a behind-the-scenes look at the daily operations. Um, and classes will be held on Monday evenings and classes start September the sixteenth and they end October the twenty-eighth. So you can always go to thecityofflorence.com or call six six five thirty-one thirteen for more information. I'm glad to say that we did our resolutions for, uh, the National Healthcare Center Day and also for Black Business Month. But also August is known as National Dogma. And also Women's Equality Day is August the twenty-sixth. So be mindful of that. And if you have, we're gonna start, uh, Mayor, also even when it comes to those drains, because I've been noticing, um, a lot of people when they cut around these little drains and stuff, debris gets in them. And we truly have to be mindful because that debris will prevent your water from flowing effectively. So, um, we're gonna try to do some campaigns so people understand the importance of cleaning out debris, um, when it comes to those, um, pipes, all right? That's all I got, Mayor.
All right. And just to add to your report for, um, we've been in discussion about a city youth university. And, um, also, Ms. Pope, she will be in contact with, we are teaching from West Florence. I have obtained that teacher contact for you, Ms. Pope. Um, so the next endeavor will be expanding City Uni- City, City University to a City Youth University. And I've been in communication with the school superintendent and they've actually gonna set some ways of giving the student credit. So Florence, the next step for the CU will be extending it to a City Youth University.
And I like that, Mayor, and I hope it can go, um, I've been to West Florence, um, Ms. Lee have, uh, invited me to West Florence to talk to their leadership class. So, and, and it talks about the interworkings of the city council, you know, what, what government does. So I would love for those kids to be, uh, invited to that. That would be great for them.
Okay. And what's gonna occur, um, the superintendent's already told with the teaching communicated. So basically, um, they've got a criteria for the students who will be able to, you know, come because it's going to, to transportation, timing, and all these things. But I do have that contact information for you. Good. So Chairwoman, thank you for that report. I truly appreciate it. Next, we will have a report from the Chair of the Finance Audit and Budget Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The finance me, the finance committee, we met on, on July thirty-first and, uh, uh, the brunt of our conversation was the, uh, was the, uh, a more lengthy presentation from the, uh, First Triane Advisors. Basically, you know, in a sense, you know, when, uh, we first got together to review the bond, it was up there, we were anticipating about five hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. Now it's up, again, as you predicted, as you stated earlier, to roughly six hundred and seventy billion dollars. So, um, that's an additional a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars, and that's because of, you know, different factors. In the long short of it, economic development costs and, um, um, you know, it, the, some of these, most of these costs were, were happening roughly eight years out from now. But because of the plant, it pushed everything up far as capacity-wise. And so just wanting the citizens to know that we are, uh, heavily invested in updating our infrastructure, upstirring, expanding our infrastructure to, to make sure that we can, uh, be at the, uh, the front end of future growth. And so council approved that today, uh, of the two hundred and seventy million dollars today. And so again, this again, it's making sure that everyone's aware that, you know, we are committed to, uh, making sure that Florence is ahead of, ahead of the growth here. Um, and lastly, we just, we went over the, uh, the monthly report for June with, uh, uh, Glenn, who's out there in the back, he's great. We, we briefly went over it because a lot of the numbers are fluctuating because it is the final month of the fiscal year. And we will readdress that again at the next, uh, finance committee meeting. But again, the majority of our conversation was a presentation, uh, from our, uh, financial advisor. So that will conclude our report, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor.
Thank you for that report, Chair. Next, we'll get ready to enter our executive session, at which time the following items will be on for our executive session. A would be a discussion regarding an economic development project thirty dash four dash seventy A five. Then B, to receive legal advice regarding a potential lawsuit thirty dash four dash seventy A two. Then C, a personnel matter thirty dash four dash seventy A one. And item D, action from the executive session from the special call meeting held at eleven o'clock AM on August twelfth, twenty twenty-four, receive, to receive legal advice regarding the PFAS lawsuit thirty dash four dash seventy A two. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
With none in the executive session. We have just returned from executive session, at which time no votes are action were taken. So we will proceed back to our agenda. One of the items that was taken up in executive session was resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five. It was a resolution of the city council for approving downtown redevelopment grant for the first quarter fiscal year of twenty-five. We have a motion in second and a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That take care of that action item. And the other item was just to receive, um, information on potential, um, lawsuit. No action was taken. And also a personnel matter, which no action was taken. Then we had also an item was, was D, action from our executive session from the special call meeting held at eleven o'clock AM on August twelfth, twenty twenty-four, to receive legal advice regarding the PFAS lawsuit thirty dash four dash seventy A two. Do we have a motion or opinion?
Yes, move that we, uh, authorize the city manager to work with our attorneys on two parts of this. Number one, to opt out of additional PFAS-PFOA class action matters. And then number two, to approve and authorize the filing of an action by the city of Florence related to PFAS and PFOS, PFOA claims for damages on behalf of the city of Florence.
You've heard the motion. We have a motion in second and a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed like sign. That completes, um, agenda for today. Do we have a motion?
So move.
We have a motion? End of discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjournments signify by saying aye.
Aye.